All right, welcome everybody. We will call to order the City Council Committee of the Whole for August 8th, 2022. If the clerk will help me with the roll.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow, Snow is absent. Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Okay. We have no public comment registered this evening. We have no public forum under reports of officers, boards, and special committee committees. We have a badge presentation tonight to Officer Stephen Golden, Officer Dylan Rackley, and Officer Zachary Smith and Chief Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rackley, Smith, Golden, you want to step up, please? First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor and council for giving us the opportunity to present to you our three newest officers. On Saturday, August 6th, they successfully completed their probationary period. So I know what you have heard up to this point, me give this presentation before, but these gentlemen, and for the benefit of their families and friends that are here tonight, who I also thank for coming, appreciate having you here in the audience. These officers, when they got hired, they were issued badges, but it was just any old random badge that we found laying around the office. So it really didn't have the impact that these badges here tonight will have, because these badges actually have their star number on them. So this is your badge for as long as you are here with the Belvidere Police Department, which is like 30, 35 years. So.
The younger guys, Steve.
So, and then typically, once somebody retires from the police department, they get their badge in a shadow box. There's a whole ceremony that comes along with that. But I'm going to go ahead and call these gentlemen up one by one and present them with their badges according to their seniority. So first, I'm going to have Officer Rackley. Before I do, he's been here a year, and he's already been involved in a situation on our department. He comes to us with a great deal of experience. All three of these gentlemen are lateral police officers, which mean they came to our department from other departments with prior police experience. And Officer Rackley, in his first year, was one of the officers that was involved in a barricaded, armed barricaded subject incident where him and the rest of his shift ultimately ended up getting formally commendations for that. So Officer Rackley, Officer Rackley is badge 420, 420. So I respectfully present this badge to you, and thank you for your service, and congratulations.
Thanks, Steve.
So, one thing I also did tell these guys is they were going to be saying a few words, and for Zach, it's just a few. Please. We want to get out of here, okay? So, Officer Rackley. Because Dylan loves to talk.
Yeah. Probably the opposite of Zach. Thanks for everyone for coming. It's been a pleasure working here for a year already, and I, it's a place I see myself working for 20 something years, so, yeah. Thanks for coming.
So I could have gone on and on about Dylan, but that pretty much sums it up. So the next officer I call up is going to be Officer Zachary Smith. Zach's badge is 421, 421. If you haven't figured out, these three officers were hired at the same time, so it'll be sequentially, essentially 0, 1, and 2. And Zach, Zach is, has come to us and has been a breath of fresh air. He is one of these people that, when you come into the office around any holiday, I don't care which holiday it is, he has stuff posted all over the place, in patrol, upstairs at city admin, whether it be Christmas, Halloween, St. Patty's Day, you know, Valentine's Day, he's got decorations for the whole office. It's actually been great, and to my surprise, it's been received well by everyone. So for that, we all thank you, just bringing a little humility and just a little bit of lightheartedness and kindness to, you know, to a profession, especially right now, that is a bit rough. So Zach also has shown an interest in becoming an accident reconstructionist. So while we were in an, we had an opportunity to go ahead and send him to that training, which is a long training. It takes a lot of dedication and commitment, and a lot of math, apparently, something that I have no interest in. But Zach, he's been buckling down, and he's been successfully completing the training and be one of our newest accident reconstructionists here in the near future. So Zach, I'll go ahead and present you with your badge, 421. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Like Dylan said, thanks everyone for coming out. It's been a year since we all lateraled over. It's been a pleasure working with you guys, getting to know the department, getting to know the community. Community's absolutely been outstanding. Everything's been awesome. I can't even believe it's been a year. It flies by. When you're doing a job you love, you pretty much wake up, go to work, and you can't believe it's 5:30 and you're getting off. It's awesome working with fire, community, everything's great. I am having the opportunity, though, being up here, Mayor Morris, I would like you to put me in touch who's doing the decorations for the city this year. If you can't, I don't know what council member's going to handle that, but reach out. We'll have lunch, I'll buy you lunch. We can talk about what we can do moving forward, and that's it. No, in all seriousness, it is, it is nice having, you know, having the reception, and I was a little hesitant as far as decorations go, and lighting up the atmosphere and the environment in the department. It is something that I take great pride in, bringing smiles to people's faces in dispatch or records or whoever it is. So it's something that I've always enjoyed doing. Thanks for my family always supporting me. Everything is good on that front, and thanks for coming out. Thank you.
And last, but definitely not least, I have Officer Steve Golden. We call him Stone Park Steve, because that's where he came from. But Steve really has been a pleasant surprise as well. You know, he was, he tended to be a little bit more on the reserved side when he was going through field training, but ever since he's gotten on his own, holy cow, his personality has really come through, and it's been something that's been fun to watch, because he'll come up to people within the department, not, you know, citizens, but within the department, and he'll say, can I give you a hug? You know, and I mean, you wouldn't expect it, because he's, you know, so kind of reserved that he says it, and it just takes you back a second, and then you realize that, you know, one, he's serious. And two, it's just part of his personality. It's been, it's just been flipping awesome. So for that, it's just, once again, just keeping things light and, you know, trying to show that, you know, we truly are human beings, and how you interact with one another, you know, that translates out into the community, because for those of you who don't know, he's going to be our next SRO while Officer Kaplan is out on sick leave. So starting August 20th, right?
22nd.
22nd, he'll be starting with Belvidere High School and Middle School as the SRO, probably until the beginning of December or so. So, you know, it takes, gives me great pleasure to issue badge number 422 to Officer Steve Golden. Congratulations.
Thank you, chief. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I want to thank God. This is a great blessing to be here. This is a great community, made some really good friends here. That is my little one there, that's my mini-me, who's been fighting to be with me. It's my wife. Come here, baby.
Come on.
Then my wife over there, Diane. Thank you so much. Thank you. Everybody welcomed us with open arms here. From the bottom of my heart and my family, thank you all. Thank you.
Well, I would like to say to Officer Golden and Rackley and Officer Smith, welcome. Thank you for choosing Belvidere. You could have went anywhere. We certainly welcome you here in this community. I understand how difficult it can be at times for your job, but this community appreciates it, so on behalf of the City Council, and behalf of the citizens of Belvidere, and myself, thank you very much, and we appreciate it, and hope you have a long and safe career here. Thank you. Okay, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business this evening? We have none. Item 2, under building, planning, zoning, new business. Item A, we have the annexation of territory north of I-90 and west of Genoa Road as an annexation agreement. A presentation this evening, Belvidere Retail LLC, we have this evening with us here, Mr. Tom Zank, on behalf of the Heidner Group. Thank you, Tom. And also, on your desks were an informational to follow along with the presentation that hopefully, yes, that will be up on the screen, so, welcome, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff, we appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. My name is Tom Zank. I'm an attorney from Crystal Lake, Illinois, and I'm here with two representatives from the developers. There's Mike McKinnon and Bruce Larson in the back there, and we represent the Belvidere Retail LLC and the OM Belvidere Group LLC, who have contracted to buy this 43 and 1/2 acres from Donald Bush. And as the mayor indicated, it's, as you know, it's north of I-90 and in between Trip Road and Genoa Road. So we appear tomorrow before the planning and zoning. We're looking forward to that, and we'll probably be a little more verbose then than we are now. And Mike's here, he put together this, this short presentation for you, and Mike, I'd ask you to just, I'm going to turn the baton over to you, and give us a bird's eye view of what this whole project is, please. And then afterwards, we hope that you make a motion to refer this for the annexation and the annexation agreement. Thank you. Mike McKinnon.
Thanks, Tom. So a quick 45-minute presentation will be right through this. So just, the point of tonight was just to give everybody an overview, so everybody knows what's going to be coming forward over the next 30 to 45 days. So obviously, we have the 43 acres under contract, almost everything just south of the creek, a little drainage creek, to the interstate between Trip and Genoa, is what we're under contract and what we're in the process of developing right now. So there's going to be several phases to development. The first phase of development's going to be the fuel center, kind of in the southeast corner of the development, 12,000 square foot convenience store. It's got the auto pumps up against Genoa Road, as you would expect, and then the diesel pumps for the truck lanes would be on the west side. There are going to be three restaurants constructed inside of the convenience store. Two have drive-throughs. We have Jimmy John's, Wingstop, and Smoothie King, all going to be part of that, plus your traditional convenience store offerings as well. To the north of that, we're showing currently two quick-service drive-through restaurants and a retail strip center. Those might change out as we get tenant interest, you know, tenants typically don't get too interested until we start pushing dirt around, so they know it's a real project. Behind that, we have been working with various hotel developers, which is directly behind those three retail lots. And then the southwest portion of the property, we've been looking at doing a distribution center warehouse, but there also might be some other big-box retailers interested. We're working both sides, but we're getting some good interest just because of the visibility to the interstate. As part of this, we're going to be extending Crystal Parkway from Trip to Genoa, and then obviously building all the stormwater improvements as well. So, next one's a really boring engineering slide, just showing the portion that's going to be annexed. They can worry about that tomorrow. So, yeah, so currently, as you guys know, we abut Walmart to the north and east of us. We abut the industrial to the west and kind of northwest of us. So the zoning, and kind of how we blend the zoning, kind of all makes sense from a land planning perspective. That's really what I wanted to convey with this slide. So the next one, this shows what our proposed rezoning of the property. So the southeast corner where the fuel center is, and then also the three retail outlets with the hotel, and the stormwater detention pond, those would all be zoned planned business. And then the southwest portion of the development would be planned industrial. So like I said, all kind of mail, you know, we're kind of blending what the existing uses are and pulling them all into our development. Plat of subdivision, again, very boring engineering stuff, but, yeah, so we're going through right now, we're just going to plat everything upfront. The stormwater detention would be on its own lot. We'll be dedicating to the city, the Crystal Parkway right-of-way, as we're going through, and we're going to construct that ourselves. Other than that, I don't think there's anything too interesting on plats of subdivision. So I thought I'd spend a little bit of time talking about the first phase, since this is relatively solidified. We talked about the convenience store, the three restaurants in it. There's eight auto fueling pumps in the front, so there's 16 positions, because there's one on each side. There's eight commercial fueling lanes in the back. We're building five with the first phase, and then as, as demand increases, we'll add three more lanes on the west side with the CAT scale, make sure that everybody's low compliant on the west side. And then there's 63 truck parking stalls, as you can see over in the truck parking court on the west end of development. Trying to think, so there will be a small detention pond in the southeast corner, just because of drainage areas and how we got to move the stormwater detention around. Yeah, nothing too exciting with this, you know, there's already the existing signal in, when they did everything, they already stubbed Crystal Parkway extension into the site, so there's already a lot of work that was already previously done by the city and the DOTs. Signage is actually something we've worked with a bit with Gina and the city with. So each lot will have its own dedicated sign. The fuel center will have 40-foot sign, we're on kind of the, maybe the southwest corner of the Crystal Parkway extension and Genoa Road, if that makes sense. I don't have my laser pointer tonight. And then immediately on the north side of that, we're also doing a 40-foot sign for the development, so we can, you know, the intention of that was to put signage for the hotel user, and also for the industrial users to the west, so everybody had some primary signage up on the frontage, and so people would know, you know, that they needed to turn in there to get to the quick-service restaurant. So, otherwise, they get too far up, and then they got to do U-turns, and it turns into disaster if people don't know where to turn. We're also doing freeway high-rise signs. We're currently planning one in the southwest, southeast corner of the site, in the very bottom of the page, and then also one for the industrial user on their lot, so there's plenty of visibility, so people know, they have enough notice to turn off, they understand they're not making last-minute turns while going 70 miles an hour or faster. So this, you know, we branded a speed track. They have over 20 operating locations. We're actually partnering with them as well, so there's quite, quite a lot of synergies going into this project. So one of the things we're working with the city is actually a mural on the north side of the building. Have we agreed on the final mural? I don't think we have. No. All right, so this is just illustrative purposes only. So something we've been working with the city on. So we, as we go through this process, we're going to be requesting annexation, the rezoning of the property, we need a special use approval for a planned unit development for the motor fuel, and then preliminary and final plats of subdivision. Just quickly, on the benefits we already talked about, you know, we're going to be extending Crystal Parkway at our cost, you know, and that, those improvements will be dedicated to the city, extending the water, sanitary, creating all the stormwater detention ponds. We're extending the corporate limits of the city down to the interstate, and, you know, plus, this is going to be a real destination, you know, Walmart's obviously a destination as well, pulling people from region, that this was going to do the same thing. It's going to be, you know, obviously, it's a benefit to people and the citizens of the community, but it's also going to pull motorists from the interstate and create this more regional interchange, which I think is definitely a benefit. And just excluding the industrial lot, just because, you know, there's still, you know, we haven't gotten that far, the development will generate over $600,000 annually for the city, so it's quite an economic boon for the community as well. So, that was less than 45 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
It was.
But, just want to give everybody that quick presentation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding that? I wanted to thank all the aldermen. Alderman Snow is absent tonight, but the way these, a lot of times, work is that the council members have to dedicate time to come in and discuss these projects, and each and every one of you, I appreciate your time in helping me to come in and chat about this. So I made it easy. We were able to do it, actually, in a week, and, but if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask, Mike. And if not, I guess we would be looking for a motion to forward to City Council an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Donald K. Bush, Sr., Belvidere Retail LLC, and OM Belvidere Group LLC. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And then also, tonight, I would entertain a motion to annex certain territory generally lying north of I-90, between and between Genoa Road and Trip Road. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. And I did want to say that, a little historical, from a historical perspective, this interchange has been long overdue for development. We certainly have not been able to take advantage of sales tax potential out there, any economic development potential, and it has just been a long, long time coming. And I really appreciate working with not only the council, but also the development developers to be able to bring this. This opens up not only development for the plat that we see before us, but it also opens up development in a, in an area bigger than that. There's much, much more potential there, and you have to be able to crawl before you can walk, so, very grateful. I appreciate the help of the council and all the staff, so. All right. We have item B, Building Department Update. Kip?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of July, we issued 105 permits for a construction value of just under $3 million. Brought in a revenue of just over $40,000. Some notable commercial projects underway. Chapco Shaw at the old bank building, General Mills, is up for a masquerading permit to get that project started. Taco Bell has been approved. Murphy Oil, I see they're mobilizing out there. I haven't pulled the permit yet, but it's all ready to go. And then there's a ice cream bar at the Dairy Farmers of America, which is the old Dean's. Property maintenance, we closed 15 cases. We have 18 in progress and seven ticketed, and we lost Kathy Crawford at the end of last month and hired Kim Witt. I don't know if any of you are familiar with her. She's a local person. She's doing really well. She's hit the, hit the ground running, and we're real happy with that hire, so, at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Kip? Alderman Porter, then Alderwoman Frank. I was just wondering, what is that, Dairy Farmers?
It's, I think they're renovating their ice cream sandwich, part of Dean Foods.
Okay.
It used to be Dean Foods, now it's Dairy Farmers of America. Actually, that's where Kim, she worked in Schumong, and they closed the plant, so she, timing was just right.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Kip, I've been getting some questions about the development in Farmington. Is there a developer for that? And the question was, are they Section 8 housing?
From my understanding, the builder who is, the owner is Petrie Development, and then he has a builder called Newark. My understanding is, as the homes were beginning to be constructed, a developer came in, property management company, and bought every house that's under construction, which is under New Lux Property Management. To my knowledge, they're not Section 8. So the rents are running between $14 and $2,000 a month, so, and to my knowledge, none of them that I know are Section 8s.
Okay. Okay. Then could you tell us about the Lincoln School area development? That was where Howlett was going to do the subsidized housing?
Yeah, at this time, Farmington has been permitted out, and as of today, Riverbend has been permitted out, except for the lots that Howlett owned that backed up to the asphalt plant, which were zoned for duplexes. So I don't know how your, how the thinking is. The HOA that was formed in there is defunct. They didn't maintain it, so, like, fortunately or unfortunately, they are also managed by New Lux.
So that was, will or will not be Section 8? Thank you, Kip.
Thank you, and I think it is important to note that there's no property tax abatement here over a period of time with any of this. There's no- There's no, uh, impact fee. They will pay the impact fee, uh, any impact fee ordinance that we have in place. And, uh, so since you brought up the historical perspective, I guess that's one of the differences. So, Alderwoman Frank, thank you.
Well, a lot of questions are being asked, so any information is, uh, welcome.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. Alderman Porter?
Uh, just a quick question. Did, so did Howlett sell his property then?
I, I have no idea what Tom did with those. Um, like I said, the, the, at this time, the, the Riverbend lots have been permitted. Um, they have mobilized out to Deer Hills. They are, um, clearing lots of trees. And the last conversation I had with the developer was, those were single-family homes that they were gonna market, nothing about, um, rentals.
Any, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Countryman? All right. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, item C, Planning Zoning Department Update. Gina?
Just been busy working on all of the cases that go along with the annexation that you guys heard about tonight. Those all have their public hearing, um, tomorrow. And then, uh, had quite a bit of zoning verification letters. They were all related to Project Kelly, though. Historic Preservation did determine who they were gonna give awards to this year, so their awards program will be, I believe, the first week of November, and they are working on a fundraiser, um, for early October. It will be, um, kind of like a scavenger hunt. Um, again, their fundraiser is fun, their grant program, they gave about five thousand dollars out in grant money this year for, um, facade reimbursements. Um, working on, uh, getting a request for proposal ready to set up for the comp plan and working with the downtown facade grant recipients. Again, that's the one that the city issues, not the one that Historic Preservation does. And just wrapped up some Heritage Day stuff. Uh, I gotta re-activate the Facebook page. I kinda kept it quiet after everything that happened, um, at other festivals, but have about two hundred pictures to sort through and upload and thank our sponsors again and stuff. So I'll be working on that probably next week.
Okay. Any questions for Gina? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Gina. Uh, item three, Public Works unfinished business. We have none. Uh, item four, Public Works new business. Uh, Brent, uh, update, Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a couple of things. Um, we'll be talking more about it than item B, but we were awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from ComEd, uh, for our Sixth Street Low Flow Channel, which was in conjunction with our open lands projects. Uh, item B coming up next is the resolution to authorize that participation. Um, the information as far as on that low-flow channel work, uh, we have submitted the information to, um, the final, final product to the Army Corps of Engineers, and, uh, so we're awaiting their review and approval. And once we get that approval, then we'll be in position to, to finally go out to bid for that project. Um, the other news I have, uh, very good news, um, we have a new Assistant Director of Public Works that's gonna be starting on August twenty-ninth, and that's Mr. Kevin Fricki, and he comes to us from Hanover Park. So, um, I plan to have him in attendance at our next Public Works meeting in September. Any questions?
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, this is not related to anything that you, you're, um, saying tonight, but on Florence Court, that, once the road was done, there are some people that are parking in the roads still, and sometimes garbage men are having a hard time getting through, and so is the fire truck. Is there something that we can do about that?
We can review that situation and see what needs to be done. Um, it's probably not much different than what was there before. Uh, in fact, it's, it's, and I'm sure it's improved because there's wider pavement now there than what there was before. Um, so we can certainly look at that. Um, we can, there's not too many residents involved. I think there are six property owners there. Um, but it's pretty easy, I think, to get them together for discussion. Um, perhaps we could do some restricted parking, but I think if we just, uh, a little more communication, we'd probably go a long ways there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right. Hearing none. Brent, moving on. Item B?
Item B would be a resolution, soon as I get to into my packet here. For the, except for authorizing participation in the ComEd Green Region Program.
Like I said, we were awarded a different amount of, uh, grant. Which is, I'm finding the resolution and also our legislative grant fifty thousand dollars.
In our current budget to complete the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel. So I would recommend adoption of that resolution.
Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Mohal, second by Alderman Porter, uh, to adopt the resolution, uh, regarding the ComEd Green, uh, Region Program for the Sixth Street Waterway Improvement Project forwarded to City Council. Any other questions regarding that or comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brent, um, this last sentence on here, the applicant commits to the expenditure of matching funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand necessary for the project's success. Does that mean that, um, because we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this, that we are obligated to spend every penny of that?
Not obligated, no, just the indication is the budgetary amount that we've got in there for that project. So basically, whatever that cost that project will be, we're gonna be ultimately responsible for, less than ten thousand dollar grant that we received.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. We have a motion, a second on the floor, then. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Next up, uh, our Storm Waters Utility Survey Results. Memo in your packet. Uh, Fairgram and their sub-consultant Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions has completed the task, items one, two, three, and five of the Task Two Outreach portion of our Stormwater Utility Implementation Plan, uh, to educate residents and gather their feedback on the function of a stormwater utility prior to the City Council's deliberation on establishing a stormwater utility. Couple of those components were a public outreach meeting that was held on Thursday, January, or July seventh, from five to seven P.M. Unfortunately, we only had one resident and three aldermen attend that meeting. Uh, we also sent stormwater surveys, were included in Boone County Shoppers, that were sent to all Belvidere residents. Uh, according to our latest census data, Belvidere has approximately nine thousand one hundred and eighty housing units. We had a hundred and twenty-eight surveys were filed electronically. We had set up, uh, a survey response form through the city's website, as well as the hard copies that were sent in the shoppers, and, and residents had their choice to return those, submit those in either fashion. Um, so we had a hundred and twenty-eight surveys that were filed electronically, and we had seventy-one surveys that were sent to City Hall for a total of a hundred and ninety-nine surveys. Uh, and then the summary of the survey follows. Question one was flooding in Belvidere is either a large problem, a small problem, or not a problem. Uh, as you can see there, the numbers are printed, seventeen percent is, is a large problem, forty-five percent is a small problem, and thirty-eight percent is not a problem. Question number two was flooding has occurred in my block. We had forty and one fifty-five, so that's, represents twenty-one percent said yes, and seventy-nine percent said no. And then I've had property loss due to flooding. Uh, we had nine percent of the respondents, yes, and ninety-one percent of the respondents, no. And then question number four was, was the consideration of the stormwater fee, and given the provide, the recommended, uh, rate of three dollars and sixty-seven cents per month for residential properties, and asked for their opinions, if it was fair, if it was too much. Sixty-two percent said it was too much, thirty-eight percent said it was fair. And the last question was other funding methods, um, um, preference for residents other than, including the stormwater fee. And with that, we had forty-seven percent, uh, in favor of the stormwater fee, a three percent were in favor of the property tax, forty percent were in favor of a special service area, and seventeen percent, or ten percent were in favor of a sales or gas tax increase. So out of, out of our original hundred thousand dollar budget, we have eighty-six thousand one hundred dollars that remains, um, for to continue, to continue our budget, to continue our implementation of a stormwater utility. So at this point, the council can decide to either proceed with the establishment of a stormwater utility, uh, proceed with additional outreach consisting of the five stakeholder meetings, a second public outreach meeting, and additional marketing at an approximate cost of twenty-five thousand dollars, or three, four, go the establishment of stormwater utility at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So I guess I would open it up to the council. Uh, Alder, Alderman Porter?
So, what about putting this on a referendum? Is that a possible option?
Well, it would be, I suppose, a possible option. Uh, I think currently, one, two, or three, uh, would be something that we would wanna try and wrestle with based upon the information that we'd ask for from the public. Certainly, no question, uh, you could, we can ask for, uh, we can ask that in a referendum or advisory referendum. I think this went out, Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, this went out, uh, to every home? Is that right?
Correct. Every, every Belvidere address, um, address. Yep.
So this did, uh, reach out, um, I guess, uh, more of a personal touch is what we were hoping for. Uh, when we look at the amount of return that we had for the numbers that we sent out, uh, we had, what, a hundred and ninety-nine returns? So I guess it's up to the council, um, if they wanna proceed, uh, with the establishment, as they're noted here, item one, proceed with an outreach consisting of the second public outreach meeting. Again, an additional, even though we've had, uh, we did take a, uh, we did reach out and try and, uh, talk to the individuals, uh, talk to the homeowners, uh, talk, talk to the residents here. Uh, and then item three, forego the establishment of the stormwater utility at this time. And I guess that perhaps could be something that we, uh, would be considered, uh, and also, uh, keep in mind that if we decided, uh, to have that placed on as a referendum question, uh, then that would be something that could be done, uh, at any time. But, uh, right now, we have a decision to make, uh, regarding, I think, uh, the information that we've asked for, that we've reached out, and, uh, the re, response that we received back. Alderman Burden?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so what about the idea of identifying a special service area or areas?
I'll defer to the city attorney because I believe there's some approvals that need to be done through the properties within those areas to be established.
Yeah, special service areas can be created. They usually, there's two different ways to do it. One would be a special assessment, one would be a special service area. Both are cumbersome proceedings to set, to, uh, to create. The special service area considers a tax. The problem I think you run into with this situation is, I'm not saying you can't do it, but this is a much larger area than a small section of the city. A special service area would be used, for example, what we did in Farmington, to fund the ponds that perform the drainage and the water retention for a specific subdivision or two or three small subdivisions, not for an entire section of the city. It's a route we could go, but either way, you're talking about imposing an additional property tax upon your residents.
Just bringing that up, 'cause it's the second most popular response here, and I personally have heard that suggestion myself, so I think we might wanna explore that.
Something we could do, I can get back with research, how to create one. I frankly haven't done one in a long time, 'cause they are cumbersome and difficult to create. Um, and they do, it's based upon EAV, um, just like a property tax would be, it's just a different rate. You assess what you need, and you collect it. I think the way, and forgive me if I'm wrong, Brent, I'm mischaracterizing, but I think the way the, um, proposed ordinance is drafted would hit entities that have a higher demand upon the stormwater system harder. In other words, the, the larger the area of impervious surface, the greater the ta, the fee, I should say. I almost said a bad word. The greater the fee.
Correct. And that's what the next step, if, if the council chooses to go that, to go that route, the next step would be the, the five stakeholder meetings would be with the largest property owners, the, those five, those five entities that would be, have the biggest impact by the establishment of the stormwater utility. The three dollars and sixty-seven cents per month is, is, would be the standard rate for, for your typical residential property. And I believe with a special service area, it doesn't have to have a fifty-one percent approval within those, within that area.
I always confuse in my own mind the special service area versus special assessment. I have to check the statute.
Yeah.
So with that being said, excuse me, so with that being said, um, you know, if, uh, you wanted to, if we wanted to explore a special service area, we could, uh, gather some information and come back, uh, to the committee and, uh, go that route. I guess I'm looking for a consensus, uh, from the committee as to the establishment or not, uh, of the, based upon the information that we have back of a stormwater utility at this time. Is that something, uh, the council wants to reflect on, uh, the information that we've received, uh, so far, uh, and judge at for what it's worth? Uh, Alderman Porter, and then Alderwoman Freeman?
Okay. If we vote on that, establishing that tonight, we're not voting on the amount, right? That's something we can, uh, talk about later on.
If you're gonna, if, if, if the council recommendation tonight is to proceed with the utility, then, um, I would say that the next step would be to go through that stakeholder meeting, and after that, to, to finish that off, I would still recommend doing that. And then we'd have to go through the ordinance, go through the rates, go through how we're gonna do it, if it's gonna be part of the water sewer bill. There was, um, in the agreement, the engineering agreement, there was, huh, we have, um, Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund establishment, the rate ordinance development, then the database, impervious service database development, the master account files, uh, a credit program to work out, and customer support. So there's quite a few steps yet to be done before, uh, an actual stormwater utility would take effect.
And Alderman Porter, were you talking about a spec, creating a special service area regarding that, or no?
No, I was just asking about the amount, the three sixty-seven per month. We're not establishing that tonight, right? Just, just the, whether we're gonna do it or not.
If you decide you wanna go forward. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, clearly, judging by how many households got these surveys and how many were actually returned, people, um, not to mention only one person showed up at the meeting, people don't really give a crap about this. Um, and I don't think that putting it on a referendum is going to make them care anymore. They're, they're not, they don't seem to want to get information about this. Um, so more stakeholder meetings, public outreach is a total waste of money. Um, no matter what you send people, they're just not gonna get it. Um, as council members, a while back, we got this, uh, funding stormwater programs from Fairgram, which has a whole boatload of, um, really good information. If, um, you took the time to go back through this, being so this is on the agenda, um, you can see that this is literally forty-five dollars a year per household. Um, doing a special use permit, I think, area, you know, I always thought that was like for a subdivision, right? So, how are we gonna draw lines between your area is getting flooded, but I live on the next block over and I'm not? Or I live up the street and I'm not? Or... Or where are we gonna draw the lines? And then, is it, you know, like, the city is plotted out in subdivisions, like, my house is in Highland subdivision. So, if there's homes in Highland subdivision that are getting flooded, then that's where the lines are, and anybody living in Highland subdivision then pays more towards the flooding? Is one of my questions. The other one is, you know, this is, this is not just a South Side wards two and five problem. The whole city, this is not gonna go away, and it's only gonna get worse. And our whole infrastructure with these storm pipes are all gonna need to be addressed at some point. We have a whole North Side that doesn't have curbs and gutters. So, forty-five dollars a year, that will benefit every single person, whether you're living on the North Side, whether you're living in a flood area, whether you're not. I don't think is outrageous, and I think we should, you know, we're elected to do what we think we're entrusted for the better of the city as a whole. And I think we should just proceed with the establishment of this stormwater utility.
Mayor, as far as the specials, if you were to establish special service areas, in this case, being stormwater, it would be done per, per basin, and you could determine through engineering the limits of certain improvement and what impacts that would be as far as a physical geographical area. So, you could, you could basically establish those areas for certain improvements, and then charge for those improvements based on those, those projected costs through that specific area. And that would be something that you could do through, based on engineering.
So, then, only, only those peoples, like, how are you gonna charge for that? Those peoples' bills go up and, and that's it? And it's substantially more than forty-five dollars a year that they would go up?
It, it, it very well could be. Case in point, if you want to use Farmington, for example, all of the property owners in, well, we actually have two special service areas, Farmington East and, and Farmington Fields. Those are, were how they were set up. So, those aren't necessarily the same cost in each one, but those were established based on the cost to maintain the facilities that were located within each of those geographical areas. In this case, they did it by subdivision, not necessarily by engineering elevation-wise. But, yes, they pay an additional tax on their, on their property tax specifically to maintain those improvements. And, yes, nobody else in the city, everybody else gets to go fish there and gets to go utilize or walk around the ponds, utilize them, but the cost to maintain those are borne only by the residents within those subdivisions.
So, at this forty-five dollars a year, once we get some of this problem areas outside flooding, we know where they are, we know what we need to do, and we're already addressing it over there with the low-flow channel. So, once that gets done, then we can take the, that money that, or we could forego collecting the fee, right? We could repeal it, or we could take the rest of the revenues coming in and start actually upgrading our infrastructure, right?
If, if you establish a stormwater utility fee, it would be specifically used for stormwater infrastructure projects. Some, just like you're, no different than your water and sewer utilities. The water, water utility fee that everybody pays for their water, water rate goes to support and maintain the water system, same with your sanitary sewer system, and your sewer portion of the bill goes to the sewage treatment plant and the collection system on that. This would be no different, this would be specifically addressed for stormwater utility for stormwater sewer systems within the city of Belvedere. And, yes, it's no geographical limits, it's everything within the city of Belvedere. It would also cover our O and M costs that we have now that we take out of the general fund to the tune, and we only budget right now approximately thirty thousand dollars a year, O and M, for our storm sewer. We do have an MPDS stormwater permit for the city of Belvedere and through the MS four program, and we've got our new regulations coming out for that, and that's gonna require some additional work from the administration because now we have to do some education requirements, we have to do some additional documentation requirements. So, those are things that are be ongoing that will never go away. But, yes, the, the improvements are not strictly limited to South Side. We've got North Side, there's the, there's the Northwest trunk extension that still needs to get done. There's lots of area on the North Side town that does not have any curb and gutter, has, does not have any storm brain right now. So, that would also be included as used by this funding source if it was to be established.
Yeah, continue.
So, that was my other question, this MS four program draft permit. I was looking through that as well, and like, what impact will this utility fee have on that? And I was gonna ask you if the, those funds could be used for that MSM, MS four program that was provided by Baxter and Woodman?
Yes, those would, those would be all applicable uses of stormwater utility revenue.
Thank you, that's all I had, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. So, it looks like most people said that the fee was too much, but the consensus was most people thought that having a fee was a good idea. According to this data, obviously, you only had two hundred residents that returned it out of nine thousand homes, so it's kind of hard to base off that. You know, when we first talked about it, like, Alderman Freeman said, you know, I thought three sixty-seven a month was a reasonable fee to make sure that, you know, citizens, we've heard many citizens come in here and talk about the problems they've had with flooding, I think that's a reasonable amount. But, if we decide, so, they said it's too high, but they think the stormwater fee's a good idea, so if it comes back, we go through all these next steps, and it stays at, let's just say, for even math, that it's four dollars is recommended to get everything done, and we think that's too high and we go with, let's just say, we just arbitrarily say two dollars, would it just mean that would take twice as long then to finish those projects?
Right, it would reduce your revenue generated from that. Theoretically, it would extend the, the time to take to complete projects. Keep in mind also that we do have additional capital program revenue sources that we currently draw from now to work on projects that have, that's what we're using now to pay for the, the retention ponds. We were able to get some grants on the, on the two retention ponds, you did at the high school in Bellwood Drive, that offsets some of those costs. And we would continue to do that, whether, whether we have a stormwater utility or not, we will continue always to look for grant opportunities wherever else we can get an infusion in, in revenue to help pay for those projects because we've got, as you know, with our street work and, and the infrastructure projects through Public Works, we have a, a long laundry list of projects that need to be done. And, and the fund's not there at the, at present time to do them all. So, anytime that we can increase our revenue, whether through grants or other programs, we will definitely take advantage of those.
Thank you. Alderman Porter?
Just one quick question here, in, kind of in reference to Alderman Freeman's comment about that the citizens don't care. Were these surveys only sent out in the Boone County Shoppers, is that the only way that they were transmitted out to the public? Or were there other ways, like social media and that type of thing?
They were available on the city's website as well.
So, here we are. I, I think when you look at ninety-one hundred, ninety-one hundred and eighty, and you look at a return of, what, a hundred and ninety-nine? I don't know if, I don't even know what that percentage is, what is that percentage?
Two tenths of one percent.
Two tenths of one percent, thank you. So, I'm not sure that it's maybe a testimonial that people don't care. I guess that's one way to look at it. Perhaps the other way, perhaps the other way to look at it is they don't care to invest in this fee. That would be the other way you look at it. So, it's up to the council, but two tenths of one percent is certainly not a mandate by any means. If, you know, we, we were looking to get our finger on the pulse, hopefully, from the information that we sent out, I would say that's probably an extreme failure. So, I don't think that gives us any sort of a mandate or directional to go ahead and tell people that, you know, you're going to put a stormwater fee in place. Even if it was something higher than that, I would certainly understand, but that's pretty, pretty, pretty low. So, Alderman Porter?
Well, I agree that the problem needs to be fixed, and we've got to find a way to fix this problem. You know, I, I would say maybe we should go ahead with the, in my opinion, go ahead with utilizing this, but have a long, hard look at the actual amount.
The actual amount as the fee, or the actual amount as how much it's gonna take to, how much it's gonna take? I think this was over a period of time, gonna generate for, was it forty-four million dollars worth of improvements? Is that, am I close, or?
Well, I think it, I think it was the, it was right around between seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars of revenue, I believe, on an annual basis, if it was annualized.
And it was identified in order to take care of all of the improvements that we have, the flooding, some of the infrastructure issues. What was that, what was that amount?
Well, it was, it was, yeah, it was, it was on the higher, it was over forty million dollars identified for the South Side improvements that were recommended for that area. Our, our next immediate project that we have, that's, that we began, the city's approved the purchase of the, the one property on Locust, and we're soon to close on the Franklin Wire property for that piece of the stormwater extension and an additional detention area on that line. And the corresponding overflow storm sewer to Seventh Avenue along Fifth Avenue. That project, current cost estimate's around four point six million dollars. So, as an example, if you implemented the stormwater utility fee, that would take care of, of five years' worth of, of, plus of the fee established just for that one project, to put it in perspective, so. Irregardless, if you decide with utility fee or not, we're still gonna move forward with that project because, A, Fifth Avenue needs to be done because it's in really bad shape, and B, the storm sewer work there needs to be done as well, so. If you were to elect to forego the stormwater utility at this time, or even if you elect to do some more research or even go down that line, we are still going to move forward with, with ultimate financing options on how to get that work done.
And also, I think it's important to note that the Fifth Avenue project actually goes to the root of trying to solve the problem, at least it gets to the river to be able to alleviate some of the, some of the water. That project, I think, is worthwhile. And, you know, I think that's where we had started. I think it's still a worthwhile, regardless of what we do with this. It still gives us an opportunity to build off of that, to be able to remove some of the flooding, so. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, again, going back to my Fairgram information, Freeport charges its residential stormwater fee of four dollars a month, twenty dollars for commercial, and forty dollars for industrial, which has allowed the city to implement large storm sewer projects, including a twelve million dollar storm sewer replacement project to install two miles of twelve-foot by eight-foot storm sewer pipe to handle large rain events. These large rain events aren't going anywhere, they're only coming more often and more severe. I don't think we need a mandate to do what's best for the city as a whole because people instinctively only care or worry about something if it happens to them. If it's not, if they're not flooding out, they're not worried about it until they are flooding out. And then, they're gonna be up here saying, "I'm flooding out, why didn't you guys, well, do something?" But, when you weren't flooding out, you weren't worried about it. So, I, I just think that we've been, I've been up here for, what, five and a half? Almost six years now, and we've been talking about it since day one. Throwing money at Fairgram, Baxter Woodman, some pump studies, you name it, we've done it all. And we're still in the same spot we were six years ago. So, it's time to, I don't know, pull the trigger, I guess.
I think that, you know, on the flip side of that, I think, then the question would be, why ask? Why would we even bother asking? Why would we, why didn't we just implement it? We've wasted money. The intent was to ask people what their input would be and whether or not they felt that they wanted to implement this. If we intended to do that without asking, then I guess that's one perspective, but I don't know if that's the right perspective. I don't think it's, it goes hand in hand with what we're doing now. We have asked for their input, we have received their input, and if we choose that we're not going to do what their input has indicated, then why ask? And that's, that's the other part of this. So, I understand what you're saying, I understand all of it. I've been here at one time or another since nineteen ninety-three, but I'm not a fan of telling people that, you know, we're gonna ask you if you want us to go ahead and raise a fee, and if you tell us that you don't, we're gonna do it anyhow. And to me, I guess I would rather not ask. So, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, with all due respect, Your Honor, we did the right thing. We put forth the effort, we put forth the expense, and we asked the people what they thought. And only one hundred and ninety-nine people cared enough to respond. So, if they really didn't want this fee, I would have thought that nine thousand people would have showed up and said, "Heck, no."
Well, that would be not really, I don't think that would probably be customary of people thinking that if you, if we don't respond, we're gonna go ahead and get taxed. I think if they don't respond, they're not indicating, I think that's a stretch to say that, go ahead then, go forward with that. I don't, I don't think that, to me, that doesn't, that isn't a good representation, or at least from my opinion, it's not a good stand to take. I think if they were behind it and they supported it, then they would probably say, "Yes, we do. We support it," and that would be their opportunity. But, as, as in anything, I think you ask because you want to know how they feel about moving forward with something, not because you're gonna look at their, gauge their response or lack of a response, and then go ahead and use that as an opportunity or a reason that you're gonna move forward with it. I, to me, that reasoning's flawed, but that's just my opinion. Anybody else? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this issue is very complex, and to see that these questions are so basic, I don't think that they see the seriousness of it. I mean, when they come in the shopper and it comes in a little flimsy addition, most people take the insert and throw it away. I mean, I, I saw it, but I didn't, you know, some people probably didn't know it was something to respond to. They probably just thought it was something to read. But, the questions, I think, are too elementary here. They should be more detailed about, you know, what the problem and the issue is.
Well, you know, keep in mind that we have had, over the years, we have had plenty of individuals walk in and out of city council during these events. walk in and out of city council during these events, and Alderwoman Freeman brings up a good point, that they seem like they occur. They call them a hundred-year event. I think they maybe call them a ten-year event later, but they do seem to occur, you know, often. But I will say with this last event that we had, Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had somewhere around two and a half to three inches of rain here recently. We have done some remediation work that would take care of some of the property from the south over by Highland Street, and some of that with digging out the pond deeper, and we added, that pond has made a difference. Is it going to cure it? Probably if you get eight inches of rain like Freeport received last night, they could probably spend forty million dollars on it and still not, still not be an answer. There's just certain times that you have low land, and when you have a storm event like that or one of these events, it makes it very difficult. However, people have come in and out of here over the years, and they've voiced their opinion. And, you know, they've, obviously, they have not decided that they, they've made this a, a big point with the council. I haven't received any phone calls, people telling me that, "I think you guys need to do this." I, I think they looked at whatever information they had, and they judged it accordingly. If we need to, I suppose, I don't know. I mean, what do we need to do to be able to get people to come in? You know, what more do we need to do, excuse me, to get people to come in? Do we? I, I don't know how we do that. You know, the event, I think, speaks for itself, and it has for years. But whether or not they want to invest in it is not something I'm, I guess I'm willing to turn their arm for, if that's what they feel. But this is a council decision. But I also think we have to realize that we've asked for input, and we've received a lack of input regarding a fee that we've asked to go ahead and implement, and that's just the way it is. Alderwoman Frank?
Well, I was just going to say, I have two people that personally tell me about the issues, and they don't feel like, it just comes on deaf ears. They don't, they're not being heard. They want to come through me. Will you say it for me? And that's why I do a lot of the speaking for people. I usually want it to be on record that I've said it. So, people that come to me, they want me to say it for them.
I understand. Yep. Alder, Alderman Burden?
Thanks again, Mayor. I just think that the percentage of surveys returned, you know, it's somewhat reflective of the voter turnout in the city. Out of like twenty-five, thirty thousand, we usually get like a thousand people vote. So, I think the people that, you know, that really care and paid, pay attention, you'd like to think at least, return these surveys.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman Prather?
Okay. So, to me, it sounds like we don't want to do nothing, but we're not ready to do something. So, what we haven't discussed is continuing with option two, which is to proceed with additional outreach and try to further educate the public on what it is that we're trying to do. So, do you need that in a motion form?
Anybody can make a motion to go ahead and proceed with-
Then I'll, I'll make that motion to proceed with option two.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Alderman Stevens? So, the motion on the floor then is to proceed with an additional outreach consisting of five stakeholder meetings, a second public outreach meeting, additional marketing, task four, number six and eight, and at an additional approximate cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Alderman Porter?
Well, the only problem with that is, is the twenty-five thousand dollars. We're spending more money now for more public outreach, and I'm not sure if, do we really want to do that? We could put that money towards the repairs.
Thank you. Alderwoman Mohaw?
So, I agree, there's a lot of money to spend again, where I, I don't feel like, unless we do something different than what we've done before with our outreach, we're not going to get the same outcome. That's what I'm concerned about, is it's not going to generate more of our constituents to come and find out about this. Also, I live on the north side of the river. I understand the problem. I'm happy to pay a fair share myself personally, but I've had, again, speaking to the percentages, two people, they contacted me on a phone call, one on an email, very adamant about they don't feel like they should contribute to that, so I'm just sharing that. I don't think we're going to change any of those people's minds. Talking about the percentages here, it does make me uncomfortable. A lot of people are going to be upset, even though we're talking about two hundred people. Again, I'm not, this is, it's a little tough right now.
Good. Thank you. Alderman Flurry?
Right. I think at this point, yeah, trying to, like Alderman Mohaw said about, you know, spending more money to get more public outreach, it really hasn't been effective. I think it's the same thing that Alderman Freeman said, that we've tried that route. No one's said anything. I would lean more towards just saying, "We know there's a problem. Let's try to fix it by establishing the stormwater utility." I know that that will get the public's attention, because when we were going to, two years ago, when we had the library problem, and the people were going to pay one dollar more in their taxes annually, one dollar, you know, Facebook went bananas and, you know, I got registered as the voter that raised your taxes because I said that we should fund the library, because I think the library is important. So, I'm sure that if we want some public input, I think it's a fair thing to do, to do this utility. Again, I live on the north side too and don't have a flooding problem, but I, I understand that we are all citizens of Belvidere. I think three sixty-seven, to make sure that people's houses don't flood, is a reasonable amount to spend. But that's my opinion, and obviously, two hundred people out of nine thousand homes haven't really told us that. So, I say if we proceed with it, I think we're going to fix the problem, and if there is some outcry, we'll definitely hear about it before next city council meeting. And obviously, we have some time before we actually implement it, but if we go down that route, I think that, that's put in the, that forward end. If people are like, "No way, we don't want a utility fee," then I'm sure we will definitely hear about it. That'd be just what I'd suggest.
Alderwoman Frank, then Alderwoman Mohaw again, and-
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible that with the five stakeholders, the large property owners, that maybe Brent could do that? Well, that we get, we at least get that without paying money for it?
Well, my recommendation was going to be, was going to be, if you want to go that direction, then at a minimum, you're going to want to take care of the task of, of contacting the five stakeholders and sitting down and going over with them. So, there's more than, than just I can do, because they have to, we have to calculate what those ownerships are, we'll have to come up with those rates, so that we can share that information based on what our recommended cost is. So, there's work behind that that still needs to be done, that somebody else will have to do on our behalf. So, yes, that would be a cost that would be incurred. But again, our budget that we had to implement the stormwater utility is a total of a hundred thousand dollars. That's probably going to increase just because of the time lapse from when we've started till now and the increases that we're seeing across the board throughout the industry. So, the next, the very next step, if you guys want to go down that direction, would be to establish and have those five stakeholder meetings. And I would have to get a, an exact price quote from Fairgram of what that would take to get that done for you.
Alderwoman Frank?
So, I have another question. So, over the years, I've given you some addresses of people that had the flooding issues. So, do we have addresses of all the people that have had flooding issues? So, we, we identify and we know who they are and where they are?
We have, through insurance claims and stuff, have those lists. I have to go back in the archive files, but I, we would probably be able to come up with a, a pretty good list of those addresses that have at least the reoccurring issues, as opposed to maybe the one-off issues, maybe not so much. But the reoccurring issues, we probably have those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Mohaw? Oh, we'll come back to you. Alderwoman Prather, and then Alderman McGee. Alderman McGee?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I agree with everything that the mayor said. I don't know that throwing more money at this is the answer. And the constituents that I represent, of course, on the north side, the feedback that I've gotten would be to forego this at this time.
Thank you. Alderwoman Prather, did you have another comment?
I just wanted to get you guys talking. I'm actually going to make, I'd like to withdraw that motion.
Second concurs. Okay.
And I'd actually like to enter a new motion to go with option one.
Good. So, the motion on the floor is to proceed with the establishment of a stormwater utility, and do we have a second? Second by Alderman Stevens? Okay. Alderman Burden?
Thanks. So, any way we can take this to social media some type? Because I'm sure people love to voice their opinion on social media. Get them talking.
I, you know, I, I would agree with that. I think, you know, I mean, you got to also remember that social media may not have a, you may not have a valid, you know, you may not be able to get a true litmus test off of social media, rather than having somebody who is actually going to have skin in the game, like we've asked them to have, and respond accordingly. I mean, you can advertise it. We can market it however, however we can. But I don't know if we're going to get a true gauge off of social media, like we would off of somebody taking the time to actually think about what's at stake, their investment, the future, and whether or not they want us to enact that. I think that's, to me, the biggest question about representation. Do you want, do you want us as representatives, do you want us to do that? And, you know, I don't know. I don't know how much, I don't know how much more we go ahead and, like I said, I, I think the motion is probably more fitting. If we're going to enact it and we aren't going to gauge anything on any of our information from our residents, then have at her. But, you know.
Mr. Mayor, brief comment. The city does not have a social media account, other than our YouTube account that we place our council and committee meetings upon. And, well, I know that a couple of departments do have Facebook pages. It's always been my recommendation that we not do that, because you cannot turn off comments on most of your social media. And once you open it up to public comment, you cannot leave comments, with the exception, of course, of vulgarity, even if you just don't like them, or they're completely off the wall or kind of baddie. So, because of First Amendment protections. So, the city does not have a social media avenue, other than YouTube, which wouldn't allow comments. It would not be my recommendation to create such an entity or, or system.
Yeah. I think, I don't want to speak for Alderman Burden. I think he was trying to get a weather, trying to weather gauge to decide what that may look like. I, I, you know, I agree. I think the only way, true way that you can do it is to ask people what they think. Alderwoman Mohaw? I didn't want you to forget.
The social- Thank you. The social media aspect of it, I don't know how helpful that will be. Again, going back to your thoughts, we hear what they say. Is that going to influence any of us if we hear more people don't want this? Is it going to change your mind, thinking that the city doesn't need this, just because, and I feel like those numbers would probably push against that, because I think the percentage of homes that do flood or that are affected, you know, is less than the ones that don't. So, then we're depending on people that really want to do the right, I shouldn't say the right thing, the thing that we think is best for the city in fixing this problem. I just don't know, opening up a can of worms like that, I mean, it's going to happen regardless. I'm sure we'll see lots of commentary on it, but is it really going to change any of our minds? Whether our city needs us or not?
Good. Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, so here's the thing. Here's where I'm coming from. It might be easier if you, you know, you're in ward one, and your flooding issue is actually being addressed by low-flow channel and the Sixth Street stuff that we're doing and all of that, but, or you live in the north side, and your ward doesn't have a flooding issue, and your election, you didn't, you didn't go around and campaign on this. You didn't tell people, "I know there's a problem, and I'm going to try to help you with it." And, you know, I'm telling you that it's not their fault, because I lived in an area that never flooded when I was growing up, and now it floods every time it rains. So, it's not because these people bought in a house that's in a flood zone. They've lived there for years, and when they bought that place, it didn't flood. It's because of planning and zoning and subdivisions being built and parking lots being paved, and that rain has nowhere to go, that now their house is being flooded out through no fault of their own. So, you know, when you go around and you talk to these people, and I knocked on hundreds of doors, and I told them, "I will do whatever I can to help you with this. It's easy when, you know, you don't have those people in your ward, but when there's something in your ward that doesn't affect my ward, does that mean that I say, 'Well, my people don't suffer from that, so they're not going to want to try to pay for your people that do.'" I know, you know, back in the day, there was probably a lot of people that said, "I don't have kids that go to school, so why do I have to pay taxes to the school district? I don't use the park. Why do my taxes go to the park district?" You know, people have to do the greater good, and just because you don't suffer from it or your ward doesn't suffer from it, there will be something that there, they do suffer from that others don't, and they're all going to want the city to do the right thing for everybody.
Well, you know, they have to tell us, and for us to surmise that we're going to tell them, I'm not sure that democracy works that way, but that's just my opinion. I certainly understand that, you know, individuals have, you know, we have in certain areas of the community that, that have issues. But the way that it works is that regardless of what I say, or regardless of what you say, or any other aldermen, it's the majority, it's a democracy that votes upon what will be done. And that's how it works. So, as much as I may not like it, or as much as I may not agree with it, or anybody else, that is the way it works, and we have to keep that in mind. Otherwise, as I'd said before, then this is really an effort in futility if we're going to go ahead and do what we, what we're going to do now, and we'd intended, really, why did we ask? We asked for a reason, and the reason was to be able to get a good gauge as to where we go from here. But, and that's just the way, that's how it works. If we think that we know better than, on this, then let's, let's not bother to ask. Let's just, we'll just do what we think is right. But we did ask, and the numbers that we received back was two tenths of one percent. And, you know, regarding all the households that we have here, and even those numbers don't show that people are, you know, screaming that they want to pay this. So, I mean, you know, if government knows more than what the people want to instruct them to do, them to do, then, you know, then I guess, I guess that's the vote. But, quite frankly, I don't see it that way. I think you have to ask, and I think you go by the information that you've received, and there's no, there's no way else to gauge it, whether, whether I feel that way, or whether I don't. And that, and I'm not the only one, no matter who it is. So, that's just my opinion, but this is a council decision, a committee decision. Alderman Porter?
Well, you, you bring up a good point, and, I mean, the way it looks here, seventy-six, say, you know, go with the stormwater fee, that it is appropriate, so. And Alderman Freeman brings up a good point, too, that there is gonna be something that's gonna happen in the north side, that they're gonna, maybe someday, where we need to, you know, enact a fee for that or something, so it, we need to keep that in mind, I think.
So, we have Alderman, Alderman McGee.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, that, let's not lose sight of, you know, the survey that we, we sent out. Both sides of the city, north side or south side, had a chance to voice their, their views on whether or not they wanted to spend this money, so.
Okay. All right, any other, anybody else? So we have a motion and a second, then, to proceed with the establishment of a stormwater utility. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passed, we'll move this forward to council.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we actually intended that to go to council next week, or if that's just...
Well, basically, we want to follow up, if that's council's direction, then it'll cause me to follow up with the rest of the activities, and we'll outline to council what those activities will be, and what those costs will be, and what those procedures are gonna be, and then we can be advised what council wants to do as the next step in that process.
So, you do want this to go to council, or you don't? Because the only thing going to council would be move forward with more work. We're not actually establishing the ordinance on Monday night, because it's not drafted.
Correct. So, if that's sufficient, if that's enough of what we'll need, then I'll come back to committee meeting next month with the list of, of activities, associated costs, and progress, and the timeframe, timeline of proceeding.
Yeah, I think, I think this was just, in general, a, an opportunity to decide which of the choices we were going to take, whether, how you, how you, you know, present this. Obviously, it needs more detail in order to have an ordinance, and all the intangibles need to be filled in on it, but I don't see, if this is the way that we're going to go, I don't see that there's any reason then to spend any more of the hundred thousand we've allocated to ask any more information from the public, so.
Right, so we could, that would be part of my outline to go through, what was originally included in that original cost of a hundred thousand, what we've done so far, those tasks that are remaining to be done. Council can then decide if there's any of those tasks, like you said, the additional outreach we could just forego, and what those procedures will be, and ultimately, council will have another, because we'll have to have an ordinance to, probably more than one ordinance, establishing those different parameters of the program that will all require council approval.
Correct. Okay, thank you. So, we will move to item D. Brent?
Southwest elevated tank rehabilitation, the construction services amendment memo in your packets. Strand Associates, our engineer for this project, has submitted a quest, or a copy of that request is attached, to increase the construction services agreement for the Southwest tank rehabilitation project from thirty-nine thousand to forty-six thousand five hundred. The seventy-five hundred dollar increase is due to creating two contracts, one for the repair of the leaking expansion joint, and one for the painting. In addition, the painting work has been delayed and is scheduled to begin in August and completed by October twenty-twenty-two. That work has started, in fact, started. I would recommend approval of the increase to the construction services agreement for the Southwest tower rehabilitation project in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one seventeen eighty. The main reason for going to two contracts was the expansion joint that was gonna be included in the, in the one, one single contract that was contemplated at the time, began to leak profusely and needed to be replaced, thus creating the need to have two contracts done, because that needed to be replaced at the time of year that the weather was not going to allow for the painting work to take place. So that was the reason for the two contracts.
So, could I get a motion to the, the effect, as Brent had mentioned, approval of the increase to the construction services agreement for the Southwest, Southwest tower rehabilitation project in the amount of seventy-five hundred, with the work to be paid for line item sixty-one dash seventeen eighty? Motion that effect, please. Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Prather. Any discussion on that?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Brent, what did we originally budget for this? Is this putting us over?
As you recall, the entire contract was, was over the, I think the original budget was four hundred thousand, I believe, for the project, and then we received the bids, but as you, if you recall, the, the two low bidders were disqualified because they weren't capable of doing the work per the specifications. So then we negotiated a price with the third contractor, Jetco, who is the contractor now, and that dollar amount was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I believe. So, the, the council has also authorized using ARPA funds to pay for the actual painting work done, so this construction services amendment would be paid for out of our, out of our water depreciation count, would not be paid for from the ARPA funds. So in that respect, it will be, it's, the whole project is more than the original budget, but because of the use of ARPA funds, we're actually using less of our, of our depreciation account to do this work.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none, we have motion and a second on the floor, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Brent?
Next up, same topic, Southwest tower logo. There's renderings attached to the memo for optional logos for the Southwest water tower repainting project and their associated costs. If you look at the first attachment, that's our existing water tower, and if that lettering is replaced in kind, as you see there in the photo, there is no additional cost, contract cost to do that. The renderings, there's three different options, Belvedere, Belvedere City of Murals, and Welcome to Belvedere City of Murals, with the associated cost increases to each of those. That mural design would match our Welcome to City of Belvedere signs that we have posted around town. Again, this work, if you decide to proceed with, with that work, would come out of our sixty-one seventeen eighty, which would be water depreciation account, not be included as part of the ARPA, ARPA monies. Our recommendation, staff recommendation, is to go with the middle option, Belvedere City of Murals, at a cost of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion on that? Alderman Porter?
Well, I'm just curious, it seems like four thousand dollars is an awful lot, just to add the, the part about City of Murals, I mean, I agree it should be there, but that seems like an awful lot of money.
Yeah, that's, that's the pricing that we got, and, and it's about, you know, when you add the Welcome to, to the end of it, you know, that's an extra four thousand for that as well. So, that, I would say that's gotta be the going rate for that size, that amount of work, and that script, because they're both about the same between those two.
Alderman Burden?
Thanks again, Mayor. You know, I kinda like, if I had to spend this, or whatever, but the six thousand dollars, I mean, it's a huge tower, it's, I don't know how much time somebody's gonna spend analyzing what it says on it, I mean, I just think Belvedere gets the point across for the cheapest price.
Okay. Alderman Stevens?
I've talked to several people about this, and most of them don't care whether it says City of Murals or Welcome to. If it just says Belvedere, that'd be good enough.
Excuse me, Alderwoman Moha?
I agree, just affirmative on one, I love that it just says Belvedere.
Okay. Anybody else?
I, I did have somebody that suggested it should say Home of the Bucks, but I said, "No, we couldn't go that way."
Well, you know, I think there was going to be another tower, and I think at one point or other, it was discussed, maybe this one with the buck colors would be Home of the Bucks, and the other one would be Home of the Blue Thunder. That's something that, you know, was brought up, but here we are, so we do have a motion and a, do, do we have a motion? We do have motion and a second, so, anybody wanna withdraw that motion, or, or do you wanna vote, vote on that motion, and second, that's on the floor, or? You can amend it.
I'm gonna make a...
He said, can he amend the motion? Sure.
So, if I may, I'll make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to reflect the first option of six thousand dollars instead.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, then, on the amendment.
A little further discussion clarification from my last comment, just to get legal representation on both sides. So yes, the, the, the long-term plan will be, when we go to repaint Tower Six on the north side, that is the closest tower that we have to Belvedere North High School, so when we do that tower, it will be repainted in north colors. We would plan on using the same script, if you guys decide to go with the same Belvedere, it'll be in that Belvedere same script, and it would be done with the north side colors, which is a maroon, or reddish, Chinese red, or whatever color they, scarlet, I'm sorry, scarlet and blue and gold, so, sorry.
Okay, so, we have a vote, and all those in favor of the motion as amended. Motion to amend, I'm sorry, motion to amend, which would be six thousand dollars, for price of six thousand dollars. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, and then, as, motion to vote on the, motion as amended, right? Okay. Uh, do we need, do we have that?
We've got a motion, second, so you're just saying vote on the motion?
Well, how about it? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passed, so, here we are. Thank you.
All right, next up, Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project Change Orders. We've got first three here for council tonight, and for committee tonight. Change order one, number three thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, that was to provide a sanitary sewer cleanout and repair that was not included in the plans. Or, change order number two, for two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eight cents, replacement of twenty-three lineal feet of twenty-four inch storm sewer that was found to be in bad condition once excavated, so again, that was not included in the plans and had to be added. And change order number three, for two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars sixty-seven cents, removal of a discontinued lead water service that was discovered during excavation. Therefore, I would recommend approval of change orders one, two, and three, at a total cost of eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. This work will be paid for from line item ten five three ten eighty twenty-one.
Okay, a motion by Alderwoman Moha, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding the motion? Alderman Stevens?
They only found one lead service?
Well, there, there may be more, as we go along, keep in mind that we're just finishing up on one side of the road, we've got the other side of the road to go on, so there could be more. This one specifically was one that was discontinued, it was not even in use, it went, and they uncovered it during excavation, so it was been totally removed and capped.
Okay, 'cause I know a couple on the other side that are lead, so.
We are expecting to have some additional lead, and there will be some additional cost to the city for those.
Okay, we have motion and a second, then, for the change orders, approve the change orders one, two, three, as stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you, Brent.
Next up is our Irene Hockey sixteen-inch water main extension, and this is conjunction with the, the new Kelly Farms subdivision project. In order to maintain the maximum water capacity to serve that, that new development, the sixteen-inch water main extension needs to be completed from the existing water main, located at the corner of Hockey and Indy to the subdivision limits on Irene Road, a distance of approximately two thousand eight hundred and fifty lineal feet, and that extension will also go underneath the Union Pacific railroad tracks. Attached to the memo is a proposal from CES to provide the design engineering of this water main extension, and a lump sum amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Budgetary construction cost estimate for this project is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the engineering services work authorization from CES Incorporated, in a lump sum amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred, to complete the design engineering for the sixteen-inch water main extension from along Hockey Drive and Irene Road. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one seventeen eighty, and this project would also be eligible for, as far as construction-wise, would be eligible for ARPA funds.
Alderman Stevens?
Yep.
My last item would be a request to vacation carryover for Jack Booten Schoen. Unfortunately, he suffered a fall at his home, and he's been off work since May twenty-seventh, and he's not expected to work, back to work until sometime in September. His anniversary date is August twentieth, and he has been unable to use his twenty days of vacation prior to that date, and due to those unique circumstances, I would recommend the carryover of twenty vacation days for Mr. Booten Schoen.
Could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Moha. Any questions, any comments, concerns regarding that motion, second? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And under, thank you, Mr. Anderson, item five, under other, item A, Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. If you turn to the memo in your packets, as you can see, Paul and Dorothy Hale have donated a hundred dollars to the Belvedere Police Department, I would request a motion to accept the donation of a hundred dollars, check number four-four-three-five from Paul and Dorothy Hale, to be used for a purchase to be determined at a later date.
Okay, could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you, and thank Paul Hale and his wife, Dorothy, wonderful people, they've been over next to the PSB for years, when I was a kid growing up. He was our, he was a mailman over there, great, great folks, so please convey our thanks.
I will, great neighbors.
All right, item B, resolution releasing certain executive session minutes pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash T sequence, so we've got the sessions, and the handout, we've got two schedules, we've got schedule A, which are on the second page, which we are going to retain, and schedule B, which we will be releasing. Could we motion to forward that to city council? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item C, we have an executive session, I would ask to go in to discuss collective bargaining matters pursuant to section two C two of the Open Meetings Act, and to discuss appointment of legal counsel pursuant to two C one of the Open Meetings Act. Could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Stevens. All those in favor will, when their name is read, answer yes, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Brearton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Moha?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion passed. We'll move into, for the record, we voted, voted to move into...
Just to make him get his mouth gas off the air and start the executive session recording?
Yeah. Eight fifty-two, anybody else who wants to?